zoning commission meeting in order at eight thirty four.
Six thirty six.
Six thirty four, January fifth, two thousand twenty three. And first on the agenda is roll call and Mayor Pro Tim Viallo votes here. Councilmember Bunker here. Councilmember Styler is absent. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And Mayor Glaze.
Here.
All right, today, the agenda basically is public comments from everybody. As far as starting the public hearing. Oh, yeah, okay, that's right. Let's rise and say the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the invitation.
Dear gracious heavenly father, thank you, Lord. Thank you for this wonderful city of Martindale. And thank you for all of these good people who've come out to help make this government work. Lord God, we just thank you for all that you do for us. And we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance and everything that we say and do. And as always, we thank you for your gift of salvation. Lord God, we just pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Okay, like, as I was saying, this is the public hearing portion of the planning and zoning meeting concerning the Suhoto Holdings. And apparently, there are quite a few comments, but there is some news that the Suhoto Holdings has decided, have they officially?
Yes.
They've withdrawn their application.
Will be.
Will be withdrawing their applications. I just found that out.
Application for what?
All the applications for rezoning, for the three specific use and.
Variants.
Variants. So, but still, if people want to, do we want to hear everybody's comments? So, I'm.
And can't have a comment.
Yes, Ken.
Do you have the email where the withdrawal was requested?
I do.
Okay, and who is that email from?
Let me bring that up. From Ms.
Karen Murch.
Karen Murch.
Very good. And, and what does, what does that email state briefly?
Sure, let me bring it up. With this report from the city engineer that we were not made aware of until last Thursday at four forty eight P. M., we would like to pull the planning, the zoning application for this piece of property and then meet with the city engineer to work through his concerns. Can we pull the item from the agenda for Thursday's meeting?
And Karen is there, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So, in, in, in speaking, in speaking with Karen, I, I, I am, I am fine if, based on Karen's email and, and what, what she'll say this evening. But if there is a request at pending application, be withdrawn. And when I, when I say withdrawn, I don't just mean withdrawn from tonight's agenda, but, but that, but that it is in its, in its entirety be withdrawn and that the city will accept the withdrawal. And there is a request that no action be taken on any application other than accepting the withdrawal and that the city will agree that at any point moving forward, new applications may be filed with new timelines put in place, subject to the idea that no duplicative or redundant fees will be paid unless, unless fees are necessary to cover any costs moving forward. That is what Karen and I discussed.
On that point, Ken, there, there might be a requirement to repay a deposit, but that'd be separate from the fee.
I mean, and, and what, what, insofar as it's not duplicative and redundant, but it's, it's designed to cover expenses or work that has been or will be incurred or incurred.
Correct.
Karen, are you, are you agreeable with all of that?
Yes, we are, and so is Mr. Suhoto.
Very good, then it would be, I think the city's fine to vote to accept the withdrawal of those applications based on that agreement.
Should we go ahead and continue with the public hearing?
I think.
People want to make public comments, that's fine.
Good.
Did, did everybody in the audience catch, catch the conversation? Okay.
All right, so now.
The only issue is I'm not quite sure whether he, this, of course, is the planning and zoning meeting.
Right.
Need to ask him if he means the planning and zoning commission needs to do this or the city, the city council.
Yeah, that's good. The, the question from Mr. Devaney, Ken, I think is a good one. Is it, does it, is it a administrative action taken by city staff to accept the withdrawal? Do we need a vote by the planning and zoning commission? Or does it need a vote from the city council?
I think it's been properly noticed, so let's vote, we can, let's vote on both fronts tonight. Share with belt and suspenders.
Okay, so as the agenda item comes up, vote to accept the withdrawal. We can go, we can easily go through each specific line item of each application as it comes up on the agenda and accept the withdrawal for each application.
Yeah, I mean, or we, we can, we can vote as a bundle. Someone, someone can read off every agenda item or make reference to every agenda item.
Okay.
Should we do that after the public hearing?
If you want to have the public hearing, you can. If you, or if you just want to give people the opportunity to make public comments, however you want to do it is fine.
I think I'd rather have the public hearing and just, we'll just follow the agenda. And when it's time for the council to vote, this one will bring up the withdrawal. Okay? I guess that means.
I concur.
Okay, so this will be, so y'all kind of know what the agenda is going to be. We'll, we'll do the public comments, then if Suhoto wants to, am I pronouncing that right? Suhoto wants to make some comments. We'll give them the opportunity and if staff has some comments they'd like to make. And then we'll go on to the, the action items for the commission. So I now open up the public hearing for the first public comment.
So the first public comment for the public hearing is from Greg King. You're Greg King here?
Greg King.
All right, so I'll read out his comment. He submitted his form on December eighth. I'm against the development of this lot as a gas station, car wash, fast food restaurant and convenience store. The city of Martindale has spoken on this matter and does not want these properties to be used in this way. Martindale residents do not want to spoil the character of the city for the benefit of a few and the eyesore of a gas station that is available less than a mile away. Local businesses will suffer, few will benefit. That is Greg King. Virginia Parker. Virginia Parker submitted her public comment on December fifteenth. And I am against a truck stop located on this three seventy five. What did it say? Acre. Due to the lack. I'd rather it typed. The track that Martindale already has two gas stations, and I'm concerned about the environmental impact to the river due to the chemicals associated with trucks and the potential car wash and the proximity to the flood plain. There is no requirement that council change this zoning. That's December fifteenth from Virginia Parker. Robert Devaney, would you like to speak?
Yeah. You, you, we've talked about developments along Northwest River Road before. I guess my real concern with this is the request to change the zoning down there. You got to remember that if you change the zoning, even though these folks, they do exactly what they say, things change over time, they sell the property, it's done that away and other properties can come in there to do other things. So, and if it is a commercial development, I don't know of any ordinances to preclude building of exits on the Northwest River Road. The next thing you know, we have more. Isn't there a handle? So, I'm urging y'all to deny the request to change the zoning. On this one as well, we don't, we don't need commercial property running on Northwest River Road.
The following public comment is from Stephen Tittle. Steve Tittle. He asked that I read this out loud for him. Says, dear mayor and Martindale city council members, I'm a homeowner in the Riverbend subdivision, Martindale, and within your ETJ, Suhotoa Holding LLC project would be across CR one oh three Northwest River Road at our location. I am strongly opposed to this project and their rezoning request. Allowing this type of project so close to the river and adjacent homeowners within Martindale would be disastrous. There's a few detrimental issues are threat of polluting to the pristine San Marcos River and adjacent tributaries. This facility will be going underwater under a large flood event, increasing flooding due to significant and previous cover. Incompatibly, incompatibility of noise and light pollution of a twenty-four hour commercial fueling service, convenience store, car wash, drive-through and restaurant with adjacent established residential properties. Additional thoughts? The developer might discuss they are bound to buy restrictive covenant to build this type of project on the land, exhibit B, page twenty-nine of this packet. After doing a currency title, currency title search, cursory title search, I did not find this language in any other document related to the property. I believe it is a new item that the seller and buyer negotiated for a purpose of building their desired project. I would ask that this item not be given any weight or merit in reviewing the request. There are miles of underdeveloped farmland along Highway eighty and the new Highway ten that are more environmentally suited for this type of commercial project. The applicant already has significant land development rights under the current mixed use zoning. I believe there's no justifiable reason to grant any increased land use benefits to this property. Please deny the applicant's request for zoning change from mixed use to commercial. Thank you, Stephen Tittle. All right.
Any additional comments you want to make?
There is, um, there was one, an email that we got that was from.
Oh, no, I was just.
Oh, yeah.
Well, in dealing with that, they put some deed line, deed copies of the deed in their packet. And on page thirteen, it was very confusing. It actually talked about fire service and on this property. And I'm assuming it said, so, so would I come along and find? So, I didn't understand that portion of the packet.
I, I kind of thought that portion might have been, uh, when they were, I think he platted that and part of it went to the fire station.
Okay.
And then part of it, I think, is this three point seven acres. So I, I was confused about that part, too. And you were talking about the restrictive, restrictive covenants on page twenty-nine.
Correct.
Jen, public hearing.
I was talking about page twenty-nine, uh, those, of those covenants. And like I said, I didn't find it, oh, and a couple of deeds deeper, you know, original deeds. And, um, so, a deed restriction is not a zone. I'm not an attorney, so I just read this stuff and it just raises red flags. And so I have concern about that.
All right.
Okay. Next one is from Stephanie Langenkamp.
She's in the audience.
She is. Would you like to speak on the matter? Or I could read your comment.
Some prepared comments, but most everything that I was going to say has been said very effectively. But I think it's pretty obvious that would be a dreadful place to put the kind of gas station that I had in mind, which sounded like it's going to be a truck stop. Idling engines at all hours, bright lights at all hours, rally people buying beer all the time, especially in summer. It's just the wrong thing to put on what is basically a very pleasant rural, narrow residential street that is part of why we like Martindale, you know? And I really did driving down, real slowly down that street to pay my water bill, go to the post office and drive by people's homes who I recognize who lives in those houses glancing down at the beautiful river. And I cannot imagine how horrible it would be to have a big old gas station right along there when we already have one at each end of the, of the town. And anyway, so obviously, we need to protect the river. It's so close to the river. It's just unbelievable. It's just right there. You can see the river practically from this piece of land. And we need to protect that quiet residential aspect of San Marcos or Martindale. And if you, especially if you have a road that goes right out onto Northwest River Road and into a big old truck stop. Might as well just move it, move away right now, you know, if you live near there. Because that'd be awful. And that's the main thing I wanted to say. Do not change the zoning, please. You know, they bought the land with it mixed use. Why not play with the hand that you're dealt? Not try to change your cards all out right soon as you buy it. That's the way I feel about constantly changing zoning to more and more lax zoning categories. So, those are my words. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Okay. Next I have Mark Suzannak. Suzannak. He's written an email to the councils. I've read it as such. Martindale's council, how would you like a twenty-four hour, a twenty-four seven supply of no, big noisy smoke, blenching diesel trucks across the street from your house or just down the street? Or even constantly the two-lane residential street where we live or where you live? The truck stop would also be a rest overnight diesel truck sitting there, running all night. More noise and more pollution tremendously unfair to those living there, don't you think? Not to mention the all-in, all and supply of other droppings by, for beer, cigarettes, lotto tickets and who knows what? Parking all those trucks will take a large. Parking all those trucks will take a lot of asphalt. The operation will likely be near, sorry, some of this is cut off. Near previous cover, we all know the, the means. We all know that means more runoff into the river, bad enough, but the runoff will carry pollutants such as asphalt, sealant, spilled gas, oil and little. Little litter. When there is a gas bill, not if, but when. The effects will go straight to the river. Protect our precious rivers from this. Lastly, I question the long-term viability of a truck stop at this location. This type of operation, where it belongs near FM one-ten, when the smart terminal becomes a reality. Sorry, some of this is cut off. I tracked a large truck stop from the likes of Love's or Pilot. Martindale's council should stick to the current zoning for this property. Some of this cut off residential proposed with the Landzeller development nearby. All the more reason to let Northwest River Road, the peaceful little two-lane road it wants to be. Thank you for your consideration, Mark Suzannak. I apologize, that letter was slightly cut off. Next is Kiran Dix. Dear Mayor Glaze, I'm resident in the Riverbend Lane subdivision, Martindale and within your ETJ. The proposed request for commercial zoning by Suhotoa Holdings LLC at San Marcos Highway one, one, one-two-two-seven-nine-zero, Highway eighty C store project would, would be directly across CR one oh three Northwest River Road at our location. I am strongly opposed to this project and rezoning. Allowing this type of business so close to the river and adjacent homeowners within Martindale and its ETJ would be disastrous, not to mention a strain on Martindale's infrastructure. Just a few other detrimental and important issues are the threat of polluting to the San Marcos River. This facility would be going underwater during a flood situation, increasing flood due to significant and previous cover, incompatibility of a twenty-four hour commercial truck stop with established residential properties. There are miles of underdeveloped farmland along Highway eighty and the new Highway ten, one-ten that are, are more environmentally suited for this project. Please do not approve the rezoning request. That is Kiran Dix. Then I have a comment from Heidi Irwin. Hello, I'm a resident in Martindale, Texas. I'm contacting you regarding the application to put in a truck stop, rest area in Martindale. I am opposed to this and have several concerns regarding the long-term impact of this application being approved. Truck stops and rest areas create adverse environmental and health impacts due to diesel exhaust. Also harmful pollutants are released into the air from storage tanks, storage tank vents that are harmful to those exposed. Noise level at truck stop rest areas cause significant noise disturbance. The Martindale noise regulation is to control the noise to allow, allow citizens to enjoy an environment free from unnecessary noise. This truck stop area, if approved, would not be accordance with the Martindale's noise ordinance and would create an environment with noise disturbance all hours of the day and night. Also, truck stops create light pollution, which is also not in accordance with Martindale's dark sky ordinance recently passed. Pollution of the San Marcos River and areas, the area's water table of high concern when concerning and considering approval of this application. Trucking facilities are significantly increased pollutants to the rivers, waters, wells, groundwater, etc. This is a safety and environmental impact that can cause diseases and harm the ecological system of the surrounding waters and lands. Approval of this application will create, create excess truck traffics in neighborhoods causing safety concerns for residents of the, of the community. Excessive truck traffic increases driving risk and creates dangerous conditions for those biking, jogging or walking in neighborhoods. Also, truck stops, truck stop rest areas are also known for, to be significantly increased crime risk. They'll have an increased risk of robberies, human trafficking, drug trafficking, theft, sex work and kidnapping. Please do not allow a business to come into our community that increases these risks. Thank you for your time. Please feel free to contact me if you would like to discuss. Thank you, Heidi Irwin. For more. This is from the Greater Edwards Aquifer Alliance. They, they're also known as G E A A submits the following comments on behalf of our fifty-four member organization. The G E A A is a five-oh-one-C-three-profit organization, nonprofit organization that promotes effective board-based advocacy for the protection and preservation of the Edwards Aquifer, its springs, watersheds and Texas Hill country that sustains it. The G E A A and its members, specific areas of concerns are summoned in the following section of this letter. Comments on zoning, comments on the zoning case. It is, it is our understanding that this zoning case is a request to change the current zoning of mixed use to commercial to support the development of a large-scale gas station. This requested zoning is located along Highway eighty in Martindale and will cost, consists of several gas pumps, driver rest areas and possibly a car wash. The G E A A wishes to raise the following comments. Turnable A, letter A, impacts on the lower San Marcos River. The G E A A understands that the location of the zoning request is in close proximity to the lower San Marcos River, a population, a popular recreational spot year-round for snorkeling, fishing, swimming, tubing and kayaking. The establishment of a large-scale gas station would bring serious pollutant concerns that would ultimately impact the water quality of the lower San Marcos River. Pollutants would stem from the motor vehicles and large trucks that would utilize the facility, hiding the risk of oil, geese, toxic grease, toxic chemicals and heavy metals from these vehicles entering the lower San Marcos River via stormwater runoff from the site. Stormwater pollution, or concern number, letter B, will be storm pollution impacts and control. Though the state requires a stormwater management plan from municipal sep- separate storm sewer systems, MS four S. G E A A experience in the impact, expecting the engineered best management practices, BMPS. Install the mitigate polluted stormwater runoff from commercial sites resulted in the alarming number of BMPS that were poorly designed and not, or poorly maintained, rendering from functional, rendering them non-functional. The G E A A would encourage the city of Martindale to require a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWP P P, to be submitted for your review if the zoning change ultimately gets approved. Further, we ask that the city of Martindale considers requiring the installation of a permanent pollution prevention, BMP, BMPs, and that a local H C B tasked with inspecting all constructions and permanent BMPs on a regular basis to make sure that they're, that they are functional. Additionally, we have found that few gas, gas station employees are well-educated on the protocol to be followed in the event of a gasoline spill. Given the proximity of the site of this proposed zoning change to the lower San Marcos River, this could be concern, cause for concern. The G E A A recognizes that land uses might change as in areas, as areas become urbanized. However, we strongly object to land use changes that would bring preventable environmental impacts. Therefore, we encourage and support the commission to deny this zoning request. Thank you for your opportunity to submit these comments sincerely. Anna Lisa Peace, executive director of the G E A A. I'm going to take a break and allow people to speak.
Thank you.
Would you go first? Would you like to speak?
My wife Heidi and I live at seven fifteen Northwest River Road directly across from where this project is proposed. You just read an email from my wife. Apparently, we agree on a lot of the same. I just want to reiterate some of the same concerns about noise, pollution, environmental and safety concerns. With the noise ordinance that the city adopted in two thousand and four and the dark sky ordinance just adopted last year, those are two, two things that I, I don't see how a gas station slash truck stop would be able to adhere under. And I don't think we should be approving any new business coming down under the assumption that they won't be able to adhere to the ordinances that we have in place in the state. You know, I, I think all the points have really been made, but one thing I would urge council is to reject this rezoning request. I can't imagine that anyone on council would volunteer to have a gas station or a truck stop two hundred feet from your own front door. And I would hope that you wouldn't pass anything that would put that burden on other citizens of Martindale.
Stephanie, Stephanie, you want? Joey Youngers.
My comments were, again.
My comments were against both the zoning change request and the variance request. Regarding previous cover limit, covered limits, I will withhold the specifics of my comments until part B.
The public hearing is for all the items.
No, I mean.
When they reapply.
Matthew McGovern.
Same thing, yeah, Matthew McGovern, now I'm on the river committee and we passed the reduction in the previous cover for a reason. And obviously this goes right against it. I'm very concerned though that we have a report from Ramsey was presented to the city on the fourteenth of November and. It's just now become an issue for the applicant that they're aware of that report, so to me that is. That's the end of the discussion, we don't know that that application has not been addressed. A little disturbed that it's even gotten this far in the process, to be honest with you, just as a citizen and all of our time here. Was spent to be prepared for this. I'll be back again with the next.
Okay, so can I continue on the other half of the other comments submitted online, so bear with me. This is really short, I can do this one. Blanca Loia, dear council members, please no truck stop, it's environmental and safety risk. Lots of shady stuff happens at truck stops, thank you, Blanca Loia. First you're all like that. All right, next one is Alan Holzen Graff. No, okay. Dear member, this email is to seek your vote against the requested zoning change related to the construction of a truck stop in Marnendale, Texas on highway eighty. I sincerely appreciate your time and work on the city council and planning commission. And all you do for the city of Marnendale, I believe you are fulfilling your duties by seeking what is best for the city. Regarding the request for the zoning change from mixed use to commercial, so a truck stop can be constructed, I can appreciate property. Owner wanting to earn more income from a piece of property or developing a piece of property. Even while I can appreciate these desires by an owner, I think an owner should comply with existing zoning and city ordinances. I think an owner should be considerate by. Consider of nearby property owners and not negatively impact nearby property owners with construction far outside the scope of the city planning. And the future vision for the city. If a zoning change were made, a truck stop would. Have a negative impact on the city as well as nearby San Marcos River. The negative impact would include increased litter, increased noise pollution, increased air pollution. And increased nighttime, nighttime light pollution. Oil and fuel runoff from the trucks and the truck stop would harm the fragile ecosystem of the river. A chemical spill from a truck will have unimaginable impact and harm on nearby residents. Again, I strongly request you vote against the zoning change and thank you for your time. Alan and Sarah Holzen Graff. This is the last one. From Leah Finley Adrian. Dear council members, I'm concerned about a rezoning request from a proposed truck stop along highway eighty in Marnendale. The proximity to the river and runoff to the flood plain that would occur is troublesome for the health of the San Marcos River and surrounding riparian zone. The oil and byproducts from the, the trucks as well as a newer traits, nitrates. Entering the river area from a car wash is harmful to the river. There are already two service stations in the small region and a large truck stop would also be detrimental to the existing small businesses. I know that the council has to balance the development in the area to the needs of existing community and environment. But this change would not be a strong asset to the area, please do not approve this rezoning initiative. Sincerely, Leah Finley Adrian. If there's any more public comments, public for the public hearing, please step up, otherwise that concludes, includes it.
Yes, I think that.
Yes, in fact, you have.
Next.
An opportunity to give any kind of presentation at this time, you don't need to.
And I took copious notes because I'm, I was kind of surprised by some of the comments. Not because I'm that Mr. Sahoda nor I are not interested in the public comments, but because. The word truck stop was used over and over and over and over again. And this, this proposal was never to be a truck stop, never. Not, not in your wildest dreams was it to be a truck stop.
Okay, can I pause?
Oh, Karen Murch, yes, Karen Murch, five, six, one, eight old Bastrop Highway, San Marcos, Texas. And I represent Mr. Sahoda for his entitlements. I wasn't asked to be involved in this project until about a few days before Thanksgiving. And at that time, I met, I spoke several times with Mr. Lee Russ with the city of Martindale. He told me what was going on, Mr. Sahoda explained to me what was going on and, and then at the. At the request of Mr. Lee Russ, I actually very, very quickly scrambled to get the. The modification of an active application in several special use. Situations, to give a little bit of background history on this, Mr. Sahoda looked at this piece of property back in. I believe it was probably February or January of two thousand and twenty two. He looked up on the county and the county listed the property as commercial. He is a gas station and usually puts a little restaurant on it, he's done some work in Lockhart, he has a. Project in San Marcos, actually has two projects in San Marcos, they're lovely gas stations, very well run, one is in the neighborhood I live in. But. He, and, and he bought it and the previous owner placed the commercial use. Gas station only restriction on it, that was not a request of Mr. Sahoda, it was put on by the previous owner as the restriction when he signed the deed. The. Then Mr. Sahoda met with the city, he met with. He said someone named, he said the city manager named Catherine, Mr. Annabelle, Mr. Lee Russ, Lisa Shaw Allen and John DiColino, his engineer, they were all present. At the time, he was, Mr. Sahoda was told that the impervious cover was seventy percent, this was in April of two thousand and twenty two. And that he should plan his site accordingly, which he did. A few years late, weeks later, after the initial meeting, Lisa, I guess, Shell Allen requested that. Mr. Sahoda should go ahead and start the engineering plans as the city had begun the process to get the zoning changed to commercial. I guess at one point in time, there was some sort of proposal by the city to change that whole entire area along highway eighty. From mixed use to commercial, Mr. Sahoda was said, don't apply for a rezone because this is all going to change to commercial. Then throughout the year and during the summer, that changed or it was denied or whatever, so. Mr. Sahoda had no choice because he already owned the property, he had no choice but to go ahead. Zoning from mixed to commercial so that he could put his gas station in there, which he had, which he had intended to do all along. Then I guess that at some point in time, the site plan, the preliminary site plan was sent to the city engineer, Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Ramsey reviewed it, Mr. Ramsey's report was issued on November fourteenth, however, Mr. Sahoda and I. Were not sent that report until December twenty ninth at four forty nine P M. And on December thirtieth, the city offices was closed and on. January second, the city offices were closed. And by the time we got it and had a chance to opt to review it, that was when I sent an email to Adrian and says, can, can we, can we pull this because. I know there was no way that we could get this approved with the city engineers. But I think that in retrospect, there's been a lot of things that have happened here, but. Mostly what I'm concerned about as an applicant is, is working with the city. And city people this long and, and the zoning and then. You know, all these people who have written that they're opposed to a truck stop when there was never a truck stop proposed. And then also having a report by the city engineer that was issued on November fourteenth, never, never getting to the applicant where we could have. Worked this all out before all these people showed up and wasted their evening, you know, I, I think that, I think that. You know, it's time for us to regroup, I need to speak with my client as far as, you know, what he's going to do with this piece of property. I know that it's a zone mixed use, maybe there's another, there's another use for it, but I do believe that. The one thing that when we, when we have something like this occur, I think that the best thing that we can look at. From applicants and city staff and elected officials is lessons learned. And I'm just not really sure how all this misinformation got out there to start with and, and stirred a lot of people up and made a lot of people fill out their meetings. And, and they, they wouldn't need to, so I thank you for your time, I thank these citizens for their time because. I think that there was a lot of misinformation that went out.
Discovered that, no.
Are we able to ask your question?
Can I read one last public comment, public hearing, since technically we're not closed yet? We received one at six forty sixteen. This is from Cindy Colburn, I'm writing again to urge you to consider the implications of the zoning changes along highway eighty. Allowing another convenience store in this location is not smart growth. At the very least, we do not want our scenic quarter to look like I have international highway thirty five. The roads are already taxed and we currently have two other gas stations in this town within two miles of each other on the same side of the highway access. Two and from the highway is already cumbersome and will only become worse with large trucks entering and exiting. We can only expect more collisions and deaths, please do not allow the changes, thank you for your consideration, Cindy Colburn.
Oh, yes ma'am, well, just, just a comment, so thank you for coming, I think like for the citizen. I don't think it was a night that was wasted because that's how much they valued their community. The way that the misinformation was misconstrued was the way that it is explained on the application for everything that you wanted to have. At the gas station, so a fueling station, a car wash and a drive through restaurant. So I think with all that, what it would say, it's kind of like a multi one stop, everything for trucks and cars and. Everybody, for everything, I didn't see on there where it said no eighteen wheelers were going to be allowed or anything like that, so is that the case?
No, there was never intended to be an eighteen wheeler truck stop, it's, he has, he has a gas station, he has a convenience store. And he has car wash there and then he had, he usually has a little restaurant to the side, so the.
It's like over there in Lockhart, we're modules of that, right?
Yes.
So I think like also coming at a point from it where you just kind of like value the community and maybe like. Respect it kind of for what it is rather than, and the ordinances and everything that were there. Were as protective measures because we do love our river, we do love our community, we do value our dark sky. That's why those ordinances are all in place.
Right.
And like, so I think whenever it's important for me as a council member, if we're going to have developers or we're going to have applications. That there's going to be an interest shown in that and like a genuine, like we've looked at this, this is what we're going to do. Oh, you know what, we're looking at initiatives to, you know, to think about eco-friendly commercial paving. Or going with a gas company that is, you know, friendlier for the environment or going about it a green way. And not causing all this panic, but I mean, it was just like you said, lessons learned.
If I may address one, one point on the issue of the engineer's letter. That we discovered the, the existence of that letter after that former employee left his position. And we very quickly thereafter forwarded to the applicant. As soon as we found that, found out the presence of it, there was a, apparently there's breakdown of communication. And managing that back and forth and when or how that was going to be communicated, I'm not sure why, why there was such a delay. It's not the intention and under. Any direction that I've had with the city staff then or going forward that we retain information from applicants regarding. The viability of or feasibility of their application in almost all respects, we try to put that information forward. You heard that reflected in some degree. From the man who was speaking to the process that was followed. And early on in those initial consultations over a year ago, we informed the applicant or potential applicant that. Under mixed use, any fuel service type activity would not be allowed. In order for that to proceed, there would have to be a zoning change requirement. And that we were, we would take the city council, because the city council had expressed the interest in workshop settings of potentially rezoning that. The applicant knew that that was, that process was still up for decision, was going to go through a series of public hearings. Ultimately, the city council chose not to zone based off the public input. I don't, I don't see any fault on the city staff in those, in those conversations with them, we were upfront along the way. Now, the engineer letter is a point of concern for me as well. But that will be addressed and the, the employee who was in possession of that letter is no longer with the city.
We can carry on with item two point two, like.
Yeah.
With regard to what she said about the truck stop language, yes, there were, and I didn't count which letters used what language. But I think a significant number of people knew exactly what the proposal was. I personally dug into this as hard as I've done, you know, I only had this for a couple of days. And I think a significant number of people represented here knew exactly that it wasn't a big truck stop, but it was a. A convenience store, a restaurant and so on and so on, so. So I want to make sure that, that, just that, I'll say it again, significant number of people who send letters. Understood that what the project was and that it was not an eighteen wheeler truck stop.
Can you kind of, I have a question if you don't mind to Karen. When it, when here you say, I mean, all these applications. Mentioned the convenience store with fueling services, except with a car wash restaurant and drive through. And the, what, what do you mean fueling services, just gas?
Gas pumps.
Okay, that's it.
In the zoning code, it actually says fueling services, not gas pumps, so we use the words. That's what it said in your ordinance, it says fueling services, it doesn't say gas pumps, so we used, what is the language that's in the ordinance?
Right.
I had a question before, are you done? Okay, um, I think there was some confusion about the zoning, about mixed use or commercial, I, I'm not sure of the date when it was changed to mixed use, maybe two thousand and eight or. Two thousand and eight and it was commercial and then it became mixed, mixed use and I, Rob may be able to correct that.
The zoning hasn't changed since they did it in nineteen eighty. One of your neighbors is still around, it was only maybe Miss Chatty down there, she can go explain that.
So the thing that concerns me a lot is, is about the highway itself about, you can see that it. The highway itself has been widened farther down, but. If you consider the amount of vehicles that will be coming in and out and the width of the driveways there and the shoulders on the side of the road. Are currently about six feet wide and so. Vehicles pulling in and out would be detrimental to the oncoming traffic or whatever, so I think. Research needs to be done with text dot and even maybe you could converse with them and say, when is text dot planning and widening the road in that portion? I mean, we have trouble in this city currently even maintaining our roads or our stop signs and, you know. I do want to see more money come, come in and more sales tax for our parks and, and, and our roads, but. If you have spoken to Sahoda about the mixed use portion of this, do you have any reflection or comments that you have discussed with him about? What type of mixed use could be done there, say with smaller businesses in a two story building, say, and having apartments above and maybe clustered together with less. Concrete, I mean, we've grown up here, a lot of us around farmland and this was historically. You know, sorghum and cotton that supplied the whole nation was grown here, we've gotten used to seeing farmland here. And we're scared of the runoff because we have so much development up in San Marcos, so if you combine that with the development and getting into the Blanco River and. So if you combine that with the development and getting into the Blanco River and now the smart terminal itself, what, I'm sorry, I went on so, so long, but what do you think about a mixed use for this property?
Well, I think that, um, and to be fair, okay, um, when I was, when I became involved with this particular project with Mr. Sahoda, um, it was already, a lot of the decision-making was already made before I got involved, you know? Obviously, Mr. Sahoda was talking about this project to the city back in March and April. And I didn't get involved until two days before Thanksgiving. And so, so I have not had the opportunity to go back and, um, and look at, you know, what's allowed under mixed use and then talk to Mr. Sahoda about what could be, you know, a good use for this piece of property. And that was one of the reasons why, um, when I read the city engineer's letter and, um, I contacted Adrian as soon as the city was open on, um, Tuesday and basically said, can we withdraw the application? Because I just felt that, um, given the comments that the city engineer made and, and, and all of those things, that was why I said, can we, can we withdraw it? Adrian said, no, the public hearing, hearing had been called. We needed all to come and, you know, and meet and discuss the public hearing. I got here early. Um, I talked to Mayor, um, Glaze. I asked her, um, is there, you know, a way that we can withdraw the application? We talked to the city attorney. The city attorney said, yes, if you're, if that's what you want to do is withdraw the application. I said, yes, I want to withdraw the application at this point in time so that we can go back, relook at what's going on and come up with a better proposal.
Thank you.
Further comments?
I just want to ask, I saw on there that the entire property, is it in the aquifer zone?
That's the sections.
Not certain. Um, it appeared from this map that the city, that Mr. Ramsey had provided. He had used a Google map and he was on the wrong piece of property.
Do you mean like a flood?
On this, on this map?
That's on the aquifer.
Like the aquifer recharge zone?
Yeah, this was the, I guess the flood plan map. Yeah, that one.
Do we have a flood map of the property? Yeah, that's it.
Well, that was.
You have to look at the little field, the underground, ground.
I, oh, okay.
Yeah. Color is very, uh, the last one, the last page. It is on.
We do have a well recharge zone.
Sixty-nine. Page sixty-nine.
I like that's included.
It's the very last page.
Perhaps I should know this, but are we, are we in an aquifer recharge zone? I, I didn't think so, right?
But I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it's, uh, it's not the Edward.
Yeah, yeah, right.
We, we have a wellhead protection.
Yeah, but there, there's, there's no aquifer.
I saw it right here on one of the bottom of the maps. That's why I brought it up where I, where I saw it. I'm trying to go back and I'm trying to find it right now where I saw it at. That's why, um, I was asking. I know that I saw it on one of the bottom of the map.
It had to do with the.
It was like right there. It's a little, was it like this? No, it's, it's, it's the writing on the bot, very bottom of the, one of the maps where I saw it at.
That it was in a.
Yes.
I don't really know. And then some of these.
That's, I guess, could be thank you there.
Right. Well.
When I find it.
I think there is some kind of.
Do we have a, a flood map of that property?
That was the last page.
Yeah.
Right. With a different. All right, let's move on to, uh, the next agenda item, which is comments from the, uh, city staff.
All right, so. I'd say we reserve comment till we have an application that's active. Yeah, we'll, we'll reserve comment till there's an active application.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say, okay, I just found it and then it gone. It said all of this property is in the Edwards Aquifer something right there. The whole part, the whole property.
What, what pages?
Whenever I zoom up on it, it goes off.
Is this in the city, um, is this in the engineering report? Is that what you're finding?
It's in this agenda packet, the planning and zoning.
Pages sixteen.
Did you find it, Adrian?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, can you pull it up so we can get, let's see?
I know we, it references at the bottom of the map.
Yeah.
So.
So what it says, Edwards Aquifer status, all of this site is located in the Edwards Aquifer transition zone.
So.
So what exactly, yeah.
Those are the engineering drawings that are done up as part of their site plan.
Yeah.
Um, which would be reviewed by our city engineer. I'll, I'll leave it to Steve if he wants to comment on what that term means, but it's not something that city staff would.
The transition zone is downstream, but the recharge zone is not applicable to E C Q requirements.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
That helps.
But question, isn't the land close in and around the well, you know, the, that pulls? If you poison the land, you poison the well. If you're within a certain, under, you know, certain footage. And doesn't the well pull water from Sand Marcus? It has, the Sand Marcus River percolates into the soils?
I wasn't aware that there was a well that they were planning on hooking up to Martin Dell Water and Sewage, right? Yeah.
Okay. I think what, what you're referring to is people who have wells there.
Yes.
Actually use those. There are some folks on more of a road who actually.
Do have wells.
They'll have wells and, and use livestock and/or irrigation and maybe bring the water out. I love that.
Well, the water corporation pulls out of their well.
Right there, there, right there. That's the thing, wasn't one of the wells at the water tank? Is it about the well?
Well, it's open by. Yeah, it's right next to the river, but it pulls from the river and from.
I think it has multiple wells.
All right, since there's not going to be, we'd like, we'd like to move on.
Just right.
Just, just while we're on this point, I would just like to look further into like the whole meaning of that. What exactly it means, like I would just like for us as a city, just to like research it a little bit more and have a.
I can do that.
Broader answer.
We, we can have that prepared when, once this topic comes returns.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I, I got a map from Martin Dell Water Supply that showed a wellhead protection zone and all this land moving upward to the north and west is a part of the wellhead protection zone. It's called, which supplies water to our wells at Martin Dell Water Supply. So all of the land, solar land, all of the, uh, this, this, this land and other land is in the wellhead protection zone.
We'll, we'll include that in the staff report.
All right, are we ready to move on to the action items?
Uh, yeah.
I have just one question. We've got to this point and really, should we even got to this point? Why, why does it go this far? And we know that there is pollution problems and there's all sorts of problems. I mean, do you have to go through the process? Is that?
Anybody who makes it, anybody who makes an application has the right for the application to be considered under the procedures outlined in our city code. So, and that's per the state law. So this is part of that procedure.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, we're ready to move on, members?
I'm ready.
Council members, Mike, you ready to move on to action items? Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so I need a motion.
Well, then wait, does Mike, do you have any questions before we move on?
Oh, I think you guys covered it pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
The public did a very good job. Okay, I'd like to, uh, uh, I guess I'm looking for a motion to, uh, with the draw, to accept the withdrawal of the application of the rezone, uh, of, hit one, two, two, seven, nine, oh, from mixed use to commercial. So can somebody make a motion?
Also, also consistent with what was read to at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, okay. So this, yeah.
Oh, should we just, you want to bundle it all?
But, but yeah, let's find a, let's, so the, the motion that we look for is, um, consistent with the discussions with the applicant prior to the meeting, accept the, um, withdrawal of.
Real quick, and, and I want to be clear, the reason I asked the question is, said what I said in that question is because I wanted that to be part of, I wanted that to be part of the record. So consistent with the discussions at, at the beginning of the meeting, that, those agreements and understandings, then the city would accept the withdrawal of the applications.
So we don't, we, we just accept it? We don't need to make motion or?
I, I would still make the motion.
Okay. All right.
Consistent with the discussion at the, at the beginning of the meeting.
All right, okay. So consistent with the discussion at the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application for, uh, and I'm going to bundle them, for the rezoning of plan one, two, two, seven, nine, oh, from mixed use to commercial. The withdrawal of the specific use application for a fueling station. The withdraw, accept the withdrawal for the specific use application for car wash. Accept the withdrawal for the specific use application for the drive-through restaurant. And the withdrawal of the variance of, for the plan one, two, two, seven, nine, oh, to be held a seventy percent maximum purview's cover instead of using the ordinance, ordinance of fifty percent. Do I have a second?
Hold a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the, uh, accept to withdraw all applications is, uh, has been accepted. Okay, as far as I know, does anybody want to discuss any person, future, future, uh, items for the zoning committee? All right, then I, uh, propose that this meeting be adjourned and we can take a, we'll take five, ten-minute break.
Motion.
Oh.
A motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have, I have a motion to adjourn.
A second? A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, planning zoning meeting and public hearing is closed. Okay. And we'll take a five to ten-minute break for the regular city council meeting. We'll continue after that.
Fine, how about you?
Fine, how about you?
Everybody laugh.
Not everybody, thank you.
We have three very.
We just have neighbors now.
I think we should. Rob stay through the whole meeting.
Oh.
Robert, Vinnie, you need to report back to the meeting.
Call time.
Are you ready, Donna?
I'm not, but go ahead.
Hey, Rob mute.
Okay, 7:48 and I call this city council meeting to order. It is January the 5th. I think I already said 7:48. Pro call again. Here, council member Bunker.
Here.
Council member Styler is absent. Council member McClab.
Here.
Good. Okay, council member Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Glaze. We've already said the pledges and the invocation. Are there any public comments?
We don't have any.
Okay, so we'll move on to the city administrators' report.
So tonight, the assistant city administrator is going to take this one. He's going to give us a, um, a quick presentation on the migration to bill.com to try to streamline some of the billing procedures, hopefully save some, the city some costs. And maybe hopefully pass off some of those things potentially to the customer. So.
All right, so, hi everyone. Bill.com migration. Currently, the city uses a system called QuickBooks. We've looked at what it costs to run QuickBooks, all the updates, IT, IT's involvement and the manpower behind it. Our goal is by the end of our license with QuickBooks, is so full migration to bill.com. Here they.
Say that last minutes again.
By 2023, September, we hope to have a hundred percent migration or 80% migration to bill.com. What that will look like is online billing, really. Currently, we send out our invoices on paper. People have to call city hall to get their questions answered on billing. There, everybody gets their bill through a envelope. This would, this method would change that and have bills sent through email. Customers will still be able to pay through cash, check, or online or auto pay. We currently, at today, every month, this, the city pays about $1.50 to send out bills. Every month, it costs the city almost $600 to send up. And annually, it costs about $7,166 to send that bill. So annually, the customer pays $17.78 for bills to be sent out alone. This includes, and I'll bring a, I'll show breakdown in a minute. What we aspire to achieve by 2023 September is to hit this 80% goal. And it would reduce costs for the customer to 30 cents per invoice. It'll cost the cus, the entire customer base 100 and, about $120 a month. And then annually, we'd spend about $1,400. So we'd save quite a bit on that, on that end. But forward, why did we choose bill.com? Well, we started this process because it aligns with our strategic plan for 2025 envision, Morendale. Zires outcomes, three and four and one and six. It proves the cost efficiency of the city, as the city's resources, it's faster. We spend about six hours to do billing. And not only to fix errors in our billing system, this would eliminate that. And cybersecurity. People's bills and information would be better protected through a larger enterprise.
So are, are you saying then, and I may have heard it, but these bills to the customer are sent out electronically or, or they're not, you're not stuffing envelopes anymore with stamps, of course?
We would be getting away from that. And I'll, at the end of the presentation, I'll mention methods of getting people's attention or desire to transition.
Okay, thank you.
The concerns that we have QuickBooks, lack of transparency. If any of you would try, try to view your bill, you would have to call city hall, send an email and, and that takes time. It's, it, it clutters the, the customer's experience on viewing their amount they owe. Frequent updates every year or every so often. QuickBooks requires updates. And as many of you know, we have a pretty high IT bill. This would eliminate these constant updates that our current IT service providers build the city. Also, the program crashes a lot. It's, it's not uncommon for QuickBooks to run into some bugs that we can no longer operate and had to stop our city billings for a few days. Like the record keeping invoices that are sent out are not retained by quote, uh, QuickBooks. The city themselves have to retain it and hope that it doesn't get corrupted. And it's expensive, as mentioned earlier. Here is on page eight, our strategic priorities. Improve convenience, automation, expand community outreach. We'd be able to send out large packets in these emails, including development agreements, agenda packets, notices, without having to bear the cost of printing more or
posting.
Postage, postage is one of our biggest expenses. And so that would, our outreach, our potential outreach is better with a emailed system. Automated payments, we've already started that, but it better, a more secure automated payment system would be possible with bill.com. And public notices, well, we do them through the email. So this is our breakdown of QuickBooks. You guys will take a moment to notice the postage, the ink that it costs every year. We spend about this much every year on billing. We hope by 100% compliance, we don't spend saving the city about $5,000, maybe $6,000. These are the current expenses for QuickBooks. If there's any questions on these, please stop me. This will be the change. And if you've had time to look for, to look on these charts, um, I'm going to skip through them. Cybersecurity, bill.com already has their own cybersecurity team and they're a much larger enterprise and have more money invested into cybersecurity practices and services. So it'd be a safer transition to go to bill.com.
You know, on this slide, so what we're, what we're trying to do here is get people to opt in to this process. And the more people that opt in, the, the more benefit there is. If it's 50 people opt in, we don't see a lot of benefit. So it's going to be a big public outreach initiative to, to get people to opt in on this. If, if that doesn't work, then my, and the city's going to pursue, there might be opportunities to, to look at how we have a firm, hard transition date to go completely from one, the paper-based system to electronic based system. For, for, and let people apply to opt out of the electronic based and go back to paper. That's kind of a, a reverse process.
I think they said 80% because you'll never get 100%. There's going to be a certain amount of people who still want those paper copies.
And now to address those, you know, we, we expect a high pushback. Now, how do you mediate? How do you meet them down the middle? What we'll be doing is informing the customer how it saves them money in the long run. How the city staff will help residents sign up. Ideally, we'd actually use these computers or iPads to sign up residents who don't have an email or do have an email, but don't know how to sign up to bill.com. Bill.com is open iOS in the Android store or the Play Store. And so our staff would help them sign up for, to get their bills online. And we'd inform them how they can continue to pay their bill through their traditional means.
What about general account?
They, so.
We still use QuickBooks.
Yeah, we'd hold one QuickBooks license for Dwayne. And they, bill.com, it already syncs with QuickBooks. Then they're kind of like a brother sister program. They, they realize many people still use QuickBooks. So for accounting purposes, there's a sync feature that all the data received on bill.com is then sent over to accounting, which is QuickBooks.
Is bill.com a cloud based?
Yes.
And are there administrative fees?
Yes, so the administrative fees are listed a few slides above.
It's a licensing.
Yeah.
It looked like that it did. Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the bill.com annually, every month, it's $100 and annually be 1,200. It would be one accounting, well, one for the accountant and one clerical subscription.
So.
Yeah, but accounting fees for the customer.
Sorry?
I mean, you have to pay online with a credit card.
Oh, I see.
There's a fee. Sometimes a lot of people won't pay because they don't want to pay that.
Right, okay.
Whatever fee it is.
We've managed to get the fee to be the same fee that we have. It's, it's a point 01% lower than what we currently use our credit card system, but the, it's both 3% if you pay online. If you sign up for ACH, there's a 50 cent fee. However, because there's a 50 cent fee, although you signed up for bill.com, it kind of offset the cost. So we would be from that offset cost that we get, we pay, be paying it back to the customer. And so they wouldn't have to pay for that 50, 50 cent fee.
And we're looking at ways to adjust their billing rates for people who opt in either through one-time incentives or a bill reduction, a standard bill reduction. Be at, at least that amount of the fee that's backed on by the, the service company.
And that's all only through, if you have a computer, you can't do it through your phone.
Again, and we'd be helping with mobile access.
So just through the computer, not through your phone?
No, you could get it through your phone. You, your emails will be sent to your phone or through the bill.com app. And we could help, we'll, we'll work with customers and see what they want to do.
That sounds better because a lot of people may not have computers.
Right. Thankfully, most people have smartphones now. We're making that transition. And so our, our utility crews will be trying to make that adjustment for the customer.
So who in staff is going to train the customers to help them with this?
So I'll be working with Carmen and Donna and Christian. And the way it works is that they'll step out, they'll sit in this room for a minute with the customer and I'll just monitor their phones and the front office and while they're working on that transition. And hopefully in conversation with the customers, they would also mention the benefits to making this transition.
And on bill.com, they can look at their bill.
Their bill, their bill history, set up bottle payments.
You're good. Good work.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right, all right. More information to come on that one.
Yeah.
Pursue the migration.
Yes, we certainly are. So we'll go to 3.1. Consider the approval of ordinance 2023-01-05-01 to create chapter 35 boards and commissions under title three. Administration to establish chapter 3501 rules and procedures for the city of Morendale's boards and commissions. And this, so this is a blanket rules over all of them is the first one.
Uh, we, we've gone through this topic before. The only adjustment made to this section is the rules don't apply to the planning and zoning commission, given the Texas local government code has laws in place for the P and Z. And so we will not amend that, but will, these rules will affect the historic commission, the river advisory board and the parks advisory board. Effect the historic commission, the river advisory board and the parks advisory board. Any future commission, that's right.
Uh, can I say something, folks? Uh, I I agree with all that documentation, except like I said before. Own own membership, C membership. If you could go that document, we're going to go specifically through each document.
Are we? Okay, what about under membership?
Plant C number item number two. Okay, it says in order to be qualified to serve all applicants for boards and commissions must be residents of the city. And continue such residency under the terms of their appointment if appointed. Uh, you know. I've been living this town a long time and we've had times where nobody would even run for council. People were running opposed. And and I'm afraid if we if we exclude people from the ETJ, now we'll say. I think everybody in the ETJ are the city limits. I would I I would like that just to have the ETJ because. We have a hard time filling positions and there's a lot of good talent pool. And and what and what we do as a city. Affects the people in the ETJ. For example, the river issues with flooding and stuff like that, so uh. I I think I think we need to include people in the ETJ.
That was supposed to be changed, though. We had made that recommendation at the last meeting.
There's a bit of a mix um opinion from the group on whether residents should be in the well. Whether board members and commission members shall serve in only from the city or including the ETJ.
I'm for ETJ.
And so.
Yeah, me too. Are you for ETJ?
Yes.
The only concern for not to convince you one way or another, but the only concern that might come up with that is. The council rep rep is representative of the taxpayers in the city, and these are the people who are advising the council and. Granted, there's obviously concerns of what happens in the city affects the ETJ, but. The city council does not represent. People in the ETJ as taxpayers, so they're 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 not part of the elec- the election. Um, they don't participate in the electoral process of setting the council. Just something to consider that if this council's receiving advice, it may not reflect the desires. Completely of the community that are part of the city limits and pay taxes to the city.
Can I can I say something, please? Another, I have additional comment. Uh, again, we we are elected officials and the council makes the decision, not advisory board, so all. All those advise, all those commissions do is advise us, so the council who is elected makes the final decision. All advisory boards do is advise us and we take it or not take it, and they give us valuable information. Uh, and I I still say that, I mean, I would I would say this, maybe. The chairperson could be has to live in the city limits or.
The chairperson could be what?
He he said that the chairperson would be required to live in the city, that you cannot be a chair. Mike, you're you're kind of breaking up here.
Thank.
I'm in agreement with Mike.
We could. Say if we keep getting the applications from citizens that we we consider.
I mean, it's whether the city council wants, so you can have the, I I was just putting that reminder out there. If you want everybody to be the ETJ and doesn't matter, it's whatever you want to make it. You want the the chairperson to be a resident, that's fine. If you want to create other stipulations, then first look at residency and. And then go to ETBA, whatever schema that the city council wants to do, it it's up to. I think it's some of our boards and advisory boards, it's majority outside of the city.
Yeah.
That's because we don't have people to volunteer.
In that aspect, that is kind of covered and the at least city staff is directed to continue seeking applicants. Until a vacancy is fulfilled. Because that is a common issue, you're right.
Yeah.
Where we're constantly having. Turnover in our boards.
Or multiple people on, I mean, the same person on multiple boards too, we have that.
Right, um and so staff would um make notices to the public in the city. Uh, that it positions open.
Okay, so we have a chair, vice chair and records office for each.
That's right.
Committee. Or commission, are they are we calling them committee or commission?
It depends on which the board is. The commission would be the planning and zoning.
Or historic, where they make an actual policy decision.
Yes.
And then the other ones are advisory board.
Can I make a recommendation that we use similar terminology? Board, mission, committee.
Cause there's different meetings.
That's what I mean, but we use them have.
So done later in the meeting, the word for committee is changed.
Did we just agree so we can move on to the next thing about ETJ?
If you want to make a or a. Mo- modification to the ordinance that it states that.
And that's going to be under membership, the.
Who someone would have to make the motion.
Was there anything else in this one that you wanted to do?
We know what the ETJ really is.
Yes, we have maps.
I've seen some maps before and they. Hardly agree on which ones are. Straight, okay.
Yeah, I think we finally got that all straightened out.
Sorry?
Yes, Mike.
I'll make a motion to change members, the membership that must be residents. Or or rents of the ETJ.
Can you text that to me because you're cutting out?
Be on a advisory.
Or just any other questions, but yeah, we could also set the motion.
Can you text it to me so we can?
Preferably verbally, because then nobody's going to hear.
Could you understand it?
Can we have a, can you ask him to, hey, Mike, we can't hear you. Sonia do the, she agrees with you. And we have Sonia.
Go ahead, let Sonia make the motion, yes.
Alright, so I would like to make the motion to um. To include under the membership to add to make it where. Citizens that are in the Martindale city limits or ETJ that they would be able to serve. On all advisory board.
So you you want to accept the ordinance with this change?
Yes.
Okay, so you motion to accept the ordinance with the modifications on.
Yes.
C two membership to include ETJ.
Yes.
I second that.
Thank you.
You came in nice and clear.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
Uh, I just have to do the commission have to do the report.
There was another part of that that said that during the time in which they're on the committee, they have to be a resident of the city through that whole duration. What what was that that said?
Y'all just change that. Y'all just change.
Well, no, but it it doesn't say where you're from, but it's saying that you have to be living within the city for the complete duration of.
Right, so the the same standard, the same standard is applied to uh. To council members, so if you if you were to move to San Marcos. You you can no longer.
ETJ or the city limits.
Okay, no.
While you're serving on the board.
No more discussion for me.
Uh, and all the meetings will be here on site.
Yes.
I would like, I'm trying to find where it's at, sorry. But to where um, how many, how many boards you could be on? On here, is it, can you tell me where that is? I could read the bourbon.
It's a C three.
Number C three?
Or commission members.
Cannot serve on more than one board during an active term. I mean. Could you do two? Are we only wanting people to do one board at a time?
The recommendation is just one, uh that way the. City council is receiving advice on issues from a broader pool. If if somebody gets two bites at the apple on an issue. Um, say um. Something that's proposed in the parks and so on, on the river board and the parks board. And um or multiple people are on both the river and the parks board, then the city council would have. A recommendation that's reflective of those individuals. In a greater proportion than the other members who are also serving on those boards.
I agree with what's written.
That seems fine. It has just be on one one board at a at in that.
And at any time, council can choose, decide the membership of a member. So if you decide that a member from the city is should be on a board, you could always remove a person from the board and put someone else that you want.
So it says that they report monthly, they can either report a person or send a written document?
I believe it just says a report must be submitted to the council. No, but they are required to meet monthly, so you would expect a report monthly.
And if they have a documents officer.
That'd be the same rule as the city secretary.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second um. Let's see, Sam, how do you vote?
Uh, aye, yes.
And Jan votes, yes. Okay, so the motion carries. Will he make the second? And okay, so we'll move on to the next one. Which is. Um, an ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash oh five dash oh two. To amend ninety-three dot one one D and one fifty-one. Dot zero three D to adjust the park advisory board and historic commission regular meeting period.
So this is a just modifying what the ordinance states on their board already to remove. If best business is at hand, there is various references in the ordinance that. Not only show the review applications or what is favorable to them, but you know, creating plans and. There's there's plenty of direction for all boards to to discuss. So this would encourage the monthly meetings.
So I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one and zero five dash zero two. An ordinance by the city of Martinville, Texas relating to the rules and procedures for boards and commissions created by the governing body. Do you want me to read the whole thing? Ninety-three point eleven.
That's sufficient. I mean, ordinance two, two, three, two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, five, dash, zero, two. Is sufficient.
I think the word what uh to meet at least monthly, the least could come out. The commission shall meet monthly. I don't think you need the word least.
If they decide to set.
Will meet monthly, if that's what it says on.
If they want to meet more than once.
For the historic commission says the commission shall meet at least monthly. For the parks and rec says the advisory board will meet monthly. So let's uh include to remove lease on the historic mission.
Yeah, because it's not up in the.
They're kind of the same. Because they would have to at least meet once.
But see, they may have, you know, several.
But sometimes that historic, they might not have anything for that month.
Well, there is. Ordinances in there that state that they could meet towards the the growth of the city or create a plan. That's right, not to only meet on applications.
Some just the river committee already have that wording in in place, so that's why it's not included in this ordinance change.
So the following ordinance, I believe, or the the fourth one is. Established the responsibilities and duties of the river board. But it's not yet considered.
Do I need to make an amendment to for the bourbon to match?
Like.
So I would like to make an amendment to um ordinance twenty twenty-three zero one dash zero five. Dash zero two on ninety-three uh point eleven and one five one point zero three. On for the bourbon to match that should state they will meet on a monthly basis.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Further discussion was, oh, they they do have options to have special meaning.
Yeah, it's the following assumptions.
Yeah, they may be called at any time by the chair.
Yes, okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, so the motion carries. All right, we'll move on to um. Three point three, consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash oh five. Dash oh three to recatare, recata, oh, I can't say it now.
What about the cat?
Recategorize chapter ninety-three point eleven to chapter thirty-five. Boards and commissions as chapters thirty-five dot oh three. And so we move on to that one.
Is there anything substantively changing or are we just changing the location of this?
Location of the ordinance so that it flows in you.
Yeah.
It's only the location.
Yeah.
Where it's going to be at.
Yeah.
So I'm going to make a motion uh to accept ordinance twenty twenty-three zero one zero five dash zero three. Uh, to uh reflect instead of ninety-three point eleven. For it to now be thirty-five point zero three parks and recreation advisory board.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to three point four.
Um, I had one question, though, about the responsibilities of of the board. I mean, I've always wanted. Some component of it, as it's been in the past, to mention the word volunteer. I mean, volunteerism, I mean, there's nothing. In in there about that, but I guess I will have to create my own volunteer committee or something. I mean, it it just. That's what had been done so much in the past when other chairpeople had. Charge of the committee that they would arrange volunteer things, but there I don't, I mean, in the responsibility of the board. I don't see anything about.
Would that need to be in an ordinance, though? I mean, you can form a volunteer like friends of the lot, friends of the parks department.
Well, it just, it just seemed in the past when the previous committee members happened and talking about that, that they were, they were leery of what. Their true responsibilities were as a part of a component of volunteerism or. You know, getting bids on things or doing some of the things that might be.
There's, under this ordinance, there's no requirement that they volunteer in park beautification or any other administrative matters.
volunteer in park beautification or any other administrative matters, other than providing advice to the city council on those issues that are described in the ordinance.
I think that if it's an ordinance and you're being voluntold, you're, you're like, you're like stating, like, that's different, man.
The ability, at least it would have the ability to do, do, do that unless I can form my own volunteer.
It, it may, it may influence somebody's interest and desire to be on that board, if they're required to volunteer or not. It, in the case of maybe they have a disability or something that would prevent them or, or some other thing that they're, they're just not inclined participate in that, but they want to be participants in the policymaking process and advising the city council on what to do with the parks. That would be a reason to, to keep that type of language out.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on it.
Just one mention real quick. I think it would be interesting for the council at some point or individually to say, hey, this is what I would like the parks committee to do, or these are the things that I am unconcerned about or something like that. It doesn't have to be an ordinance, but maybe come to the meeting and say, here's my concerns, and then let them work that, work that out. Because they're, I mean, they're working for you, so, I mean, you're not going to say, unless you want to say you have to do this, but let them know these are my concerns.
Okay.
Is that?
Yes.
But I think, but I think that.
You can have volunteer days and.
Well, not that, not that, but I think the instruction from them, I'm sorry, the water committee is literally like shut up.
No, that's the river committee.
River committee, sorry, river committee. You know, but Sam, if you think, you know.
He already has.
Yeah.
He already has today.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for playing.
So.
Yes, thanks. We'll, we'll discuss that with the committee now. Thank you.
So we're going to move on to three point four. Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one dash oh five dash oh four to establish responsibilities and duties of the Martindale River Advisory Committee under chapter thirty-five boards and commissions as chapter thirty-five dot oh four. When we, this appears to be a brand new ordinance. There wasn't ordinance, but it never got codified. So we this appears now to be a brand new, but it's really, really not. But now we're
We're just making.
Treating it as brand new.
Now, now it's in black and white, then.
Yeah.
You want to scroll through the whole?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we've already voted on this, but we just haven't. I guess we didn't have any vote.
First of all, I'm going to.
What was that? Not more than three members should be employed in land development or related to.
Right.
This is what the river committee has been following since.
In some sense, it's, it's, it's kind of become its own thing. But this is put in a paper of what is, could be expected, expected from the river advisory board. Because right now, they're not operating any.
To the regular rules of commission.
Yes.
So of course.
So it's different than just a committee.
No, it's not a committee, it's a board. So they won't make any official policy decisions like this historic commission where they would approve an application. They would review applications and make recommendations on such, reference of development agreements and, and the river level or the environmental level aspect of it.
Okay, so it.
I, I want one quick question, though. Municipal administrator, is that like a new word? Is that like a city administrator or is that?
That's the language in our ordinance.
That's a technical term that's used in our ordinance from our position.
Municipal administrator, okay.
So I actually has me great honor to go ahead and to accept yes to this ordinance at twenty twenty-three zero-one zero-five zero-four in ordinance by the city of Martindale relating to the creation of the river advisory board. Do I need to read the whole thing?
All right.
It, it's changing the number from chapter forty-five to chapter, I mean, chapter thirty-five.
Yeah. But that, that's where it'll be placed, is following the chapter thirty-five.
And then we got codified in our code with, in the chapter scheme.
All right, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say yea.
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 Any opposed? No. Okay, so the motion carries.
All right, so on this, this next item is regarding free board and I want to share your screen. I want to share my screen on this.
Yeah, we've studied this and studied.
So. Share a screen for the people in the audience. All right, so um, my underst, let's, let's start with what free board definition is. The, the free board definition, as it's applied in our ordinance comes from FEMA. It is the additional amount of height above the base flood elevation that's set by FEMA to, as a factor of safety. So in, I'm trying to pull the mouse is somewhere there it is. So free board is defined here, cop, copies the FEMA definition. What this is used for is under a FEMA flood map for Martindale. There is a key at the base of the map that states what the base flood elevation line is, and it's five hundred and thirteen feet. The way that operates in the city is you cannot, right now, under current ordinance, you cannot build a structure below that five hundred and thirteen foot threshold.
I thought the B F P was different for each property.
Yes.
Okay, never mind, wait.
But use, using this number as a point of reference on the map. The free board would set a standard that, that the structure, the house, if you will, would not be built at less than the base flood elevation line plus the free board, which in this ordinance draft is at one feet. Now, there seemed to be some confusion, I think, amongst city staff.
You said one, is it two?
I'll get to that. That's, you're, 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 you're getting exactly to the point that I'm, I'm about to make. So there, there's been some confusion, I think, within the possibly river advisory board, maybe due to city staff. I, I, at one point was confused and we went back to the numbers. It's been frequently said that there is a requirement in the city that someone has to build, if they want to build a house, I'll use a house. Build a house, it has to be two feet above base flood elevation. That is not one hundred percent accurate. The requirement is if you subdivide your land, that on the plating notes, you have to have the finished floor elevation two feet above the base flood elevation. However, I'll, I'll, I'll continue with that train. So if someone were to subdivide their land and then empty plot and then build two houses on each, now there are two parcels. On, through that plating process, their finished floor elevation would be set at two feet above base flood elevation. However, that same property owner decides to not subdivide their, their property and build just one house or has it exists, they would be, they would not be subject to that subdivision regulation. And under current flood damage prevention ordinance, there, we do not set a standard above the base flood elevation at all. It is at, the language is in one fifty-three general standards. Specific standards residential construction, no, new construction substantial improvement shall have the lowest floor including basement elevated to or above base flood elevation. So under this, under this flood damage prevention ordinance, somebody could using that five thirteen number as the basis of the example, could build their house at five thirteen. Setting a free, what, what the subdivision ordinance does, which is essentially establishes a two-foot free board during the subdivision plating process. It appears from the conversation I gathered from city staff and, and we have members of the river advisory board here. The intent was not to create a, a free board of just one foot above a five thirteen number. It was anticipated to create a free board one foot above that two-foot finished floor that's in the subdivision to create basically from five thirteen to five sixteen. As the current ordinances are designed, though, however, if we press this ordinance as is written tonight, would actually go from a five thirteen number to a five fourteen number. And the standard would be lower for an existing parcel than it would be for a subdivided property. If we want to, if the, to match the intent of what the river advisory board, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to get at a two plus one scenario. Two feet and then an additional foot, you would have to set the free board at three.
And also, it's been some glory or.
In terms of the, the exact example, yes, but the, the base flood elevation line, we call it five thirteen for the purposes of the example. The subdivision regulation establishes a, what we, with this definition, consider a free board of two feet. If we want the flood damage prevention ordinance to match what's in the subdivision ordinance, we'd want the free board to be also set at two feet. So I, I, I think the discussion is now amongst the city council and, and maybe member, we have members of the river advisory board here that. What is the intent? Is the intent to go from five thirteen to five fourteen in this example? Or is it supposed to go from five thirteen to five fifteen with a two-foot free board? Or are we looking to do a two plus one, go from five thirteen to five sixteen in this example? And it, it wasn't clear to me what the intent was, and the language is different enough that we, we should address it. My recommendation is that we, we would have the subdivision application ordinance, match the flood damage prevention ordinance and vice versa, and have everything at two feet above base flood elevation. But I'll, I'll leave it to the council to, to weigh in on what your desires are.
Hey, Jared, Jared.
Yeah.
Can you hear me, Jared?
Yeah, dude.
Yes, I mean, I'm, I'm, I've been a little confused. I've been talking to lots of people. Well, I'll, what always went terminology is the base flood elevation to the finished floor of the structure, according to FEMA, the county and what the city of San Marcos does is twenty-four inches, two feet. So I get a little confused about free for, I just use what I, all I'm saying, we should follow FEMA and the county's recommendation and San Marcos for base flood elevation to the finished floor of the structure.
Right, so right now, our current ordinance does not require anything addition beyond the base flood elevation line. It would, right now, it's only required is at the base flood elevation line. To make that two-foot change, we, we make it tonight, it'd be a I think we want to look at rewriting this ordinance a little bit for some clarity.
I, yeah, I think.
But.
I'm going to use the free board.
So, so, like, more, a free board is describing what that difference is. Free board is the, the, the safety delta, the, the delta between base flood elevation and a new line. It's, it's.
It's defining the gap. It's the word defining the gap between the base.
Yeah, you can.
What you're, what, what you're now, what is considered the flood base versus what you're actually going to put your house at, is that?
Exactly.
How, how, how big are your, is your slab going to be or how big are your, how tall are your pilings?
Exactly, so that's what they get. So free board is the FEMA word, which is in the definition, that's what is explained, and I looked it up as well. So the recommendation from the river committee was twenty-four inches. So obviously, like, we wanted to go higher, but it's, it's almost you know, it's one of those things, is like, do you do it differently for new subdivision versus existing homes? And I think that's what it is, and that's a concern of all of ours. The concern for me is everyone else in this room is if if you do more than fifty percent rebuild, you are now what are you subject to? You know what I mean? So you're subject to whatever this is.
Or, or the new ordinance.
Yeah, so this is, the recommendation for the river committee was twenty-four inches.
Would you like to see the definition of free board and?
It's, it's on here.
Free board is a national amount of. Above the place.
Free board. Shallow flooding.
I don't know, that's, that's why I said earlier that we, we want to have to revisit this ordinance.
If you'd like to look at the definition, if you want to pull up the minutes from our river committee meeting that I sent out. And at the bottom of the minutes are the definitions that we, that we got with Lee.
Yeah, that's the definition. That's the definition, the free board is what they have recommended.
Ignore the, ignore this lower portion.
Yeah.
This, this is, this lower portion is, is, is what we'd have to, we need to go back and rewrite.
All right, and then where's B? There's a section B, talk about free board safety factor.
Yeah. The, the, don't worry, the recommendation was twenty-four inches, just like Mike said, that is everywhere else. The goal was to go to thirty-six, but then there would become open to litigation, because you're now creating a stress on the homeowner or a rebuild, and there'd just be a huge variance issue. So unless you're, unless everyone in the area went to a higher number, it makes you look unreasonable from a city standpoint. So the river committee wants to do thirty-six, thirty-six inches, but it was like Virginia still wants to do thirty-six inches, it makes you know, you know, because it's not reasonable in relationship to all the other area around us. Because they could just say you can't enforce that. And we create litigation.
You're just saying twenty-four inches above the base.
Yeah, the free board definite, the free board is, it should be twenty-four inches.
And that would match our subdivision.
So just saying it that way, that would fix it.
But it needs to be, yeah, for everything. It could be, that's, like you said, it's only for some aspects of the, like, the subdivision rules.
And that's for living space.
Yes.
I'll get those two things.
Yeah, twenty-four inches.
Can, can I say something again? Can y'all hear me? Can, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I've been through this with my own home, and I, and the confusing part, I've, I've done, I've worked with surveyors. I've, I've done, I've done with surveyors, I have a certificate of elevation, certificate. And always, I think maybe we should do the terminology base flood elevation to the finished floor, because you could have a parent beam, you could have a slab, but the finished floor explains. I can't go.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, we're going to revise our ordinances to, so that we're using similar words. Right now, our flood damage prevention ordinance, it uses lowest floor. Our, our subdivision uses finished floor. We want to make sure that those line up and and, and, and as we change terms, probably want to reach out to our development board who advises us on, on ordinances and reviews, has reviewed this in the past, just to make sure that what we're, we're doing makes sense to them.
So we don't want to pass this one tonight. What, not just.
But I want to get clarification on what the council's intent was, so when we rewrite it, we can come back with what.
I would say, what Mike, you know, what Mike said, then the twenty-four inches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-four inches for me too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got it. Okay, thank you. This is not something we need to accept.
Okay, so that brings us to future agenda items. Will this say when, when we, do we have to put it back on the agenda?
We'll bring it back. We don't take any action.
Can we go to executive session?
Um.
Is it?
Bud, are you with us still? There's, there's a request by council member to go into executive session. I want you to weigh in on that.
What, is it on an agenda item?
No.
Go into executive session, and if it ends up that it's something we don't need to go in.
The personnel.
And he wants, and you need advice.
I just want clarity.
And that's, we, we can, we can go into executive session.
All right.
All right. And this was, that was our last agenda item.
Y'all, I hear y'all want to wait.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to put us in a breakout. Yes, in a breakout room.
Meeting resumes at nine thirteen. Um, Mike McClam has left us and Sam has just made a request to add to the. Future agenda items that we return to. Uh, working on the specific use tables. Is there anything else to add to future?
Well, the parks, we need to talk about the parks.
Yes, we've got that on there.
But not just the ordinance, about how are we gonna manage the parks? How are we gonna do management, employment? And, and I know that we just heard that there may be some changes in the um committee itself, right?
Um, yes, we did get word that Carol Devinia stepped down from the parks.
No, that's all, you could just mention it. I mean, I, I don't really want to talk about it.
Given, given now that the board ordinance is in place, we'll start sending out the notifications.
Yeah.
That basis has been covered with the new board ordinance.
They basically have two openings in the parks.
But just, just future, I mean, we need to talk about the parks before summer gets approaching or April to really.
So I wonder how, how the. Management's gonna be spit.
Management.
Okay.
Right.
Budget, budget, budget.
Yes.
Let, let, let's just say budget, management, budget.
I think that that's gonna be more like a workshop, though. Um, if, and I think that because it takes a lot of conversation whenever we're trying to do meetings and.
It would, it would have to be a workshop.
Workshop, so, yeah.
All it needs to be soon, thinking, uh, January, or, or word, so we call it, special meeting for Saturday, if that would work.
I want like a Saturday.
Cause there's.
And then that would be open to the public and to the committee.
Cause we've had so many strong discussions back and forth about charging, it should be charged, and should we charge proportions, should we have our, should we have a kiosk? All this other stuff.
I can tell you, if the city staff has to manage it, it ain't gonna happen. We can't do anymore.
Well, that's something. Discuss that, yeah. Workshop.
Workshop.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else to add to future agenda items?
No.
Okay, then.
I, I, I was going to, I could do it then, I'll just bring it up, but, or, or maybe it could be something, but. Do you know whenever we have the canoe race going on, going down your. The safari, I wanted to try to have something in town to encourage the watching all people around here, like a little something, I don't know what.
About safety.
Yeah.
Do it at the two parks.
We can head out water, water weeks, if people.
Yeah.
All right.
You already have a manual.
You made a motion to.
You're on the river. I, I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I should just have a big old party.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.